Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has stand us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of the day is we have a public hearing on a number of zoning changes. Make a motion to open that public hearing.
Subtle.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, public hearing is open. Anybody have any comments on different zoning changes?
Got a question. What zoning changes are you thinking about doing?
Your question's what?
What is the zoning changes that you're thinking of doing?
There's a lot of different wording changes.
Okay.
Some use changes. I mean, it's nothing we can specifically dictate this is what we're doing. Because what they can do through the whole thing.
Could I ask for one that we've been fighting for is the hedges?
There is some wording changes there.
Okay.
I mean, it's public knowledge, so I don't have it right in front of me.
It's pretty thick, Carol, but it's pretty thick of a thing.
You know, it's a whole zoning law, but I mean, if you want to get a hold of me, I can certainly tell you specifics.
Yeah, especially the specific ones that I should, yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the zoning?
Probably like thirty pages.
She's just looking for one second.
Yeah, it's one section, one courtment section.
Okay, we leave the public hearing open? Approval of the minutes of the September eighteenth, Reg. Board meeting?
I'll move we accept those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Prove the vouchers.
Okay, we've got a general fund of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, forty-four cents. Water fund, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, eighty-two cents. Sewer fund, nineteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, eighty-five cents. And capital fund, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, three cents. They've all been audited, and I move that we pay the bills.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, groundwater development project, phase two. Matt Simeoni may be here. He ran a little late. He might have some more information on it, but right now, it's kind of in a holding pattern because we're applying to rural development for a grant. Basically, the grant will pay to move things forward to design the new wells. But right now, the village, we don't, we need grant money in order to keep this project going. Matt may have some more information when he makes it. He called me, said he's running late. Zoning changes. The only thing I would say on that is, I know I talked with Tim a little bit, but I don't know if the board would like to have a special meeting to discuss these or each trustee, between now and the next board meeting, get a chance if they got any questions to talk with Tim on particular items.
We can leave this, public hearing open till the next meeting.
Yes, you can.
Because tomorrow is the county planning board meeting, so they have to review it also.
Even if the village board were inclined to, you really could not proceed with your zoning until after that. Two thirty-nine M. Review. So you've got to get that feedback, presumably after that. That's when you present the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the secret process, just to review the legislation. Close of that, then you can make any changes you want to your zoning and/or adopt if you've drafted.
We might have to get him to say right now, but I'm fine with sitting down one-on-one with everybody or whatever, or we can decide to do a special meeting between now and the next meeting. So we're all together, review the whole thing. Basically, you got to take the old law and the new law and just go right now through it because there's quite a bit of wording change.
That's most of it, wording?
Yeah.
Tim, because I'm a novice, so it comes to that kind of stuff. I'd appreciate a one-on-one.
That's fine. I mean, we only take an hour with each person. I mean, we can't really sit down three at a time because tomorrow, so you just sat down, you know, and take me four times. I mean, Joe's pretty familiar with it.
I'll get touchy in the next few days.
Pretty thick. That's it right there. All right, well, I'll leave it up to the trustees to get a hold of Tim if he wants to sit down and discuss things.
Thank you.
Better part, do you have anything to move on that, Paul?
Not really. It kind of goes with the downtown, the three brothers of a face, right? Legalization. We're just moving ahead. I think we have a meeting on the, or?
Public. Public one's open house on the twenty-ninth at the firehouse at five to seven, so the public will get, see the projects that are proposed to go forward, and then the next day is the last, right?
Yes.
Local.
Next day, yeah, the thirtieth, and the public meeting is going to be in the firehouse.
Right.
Then after that, everything gets submitted to the state, correct?
And then, yep, then they make the final decision and get sent to the state. The state has got the final say on what they fund, basically.
What was the timing again on that? Time frame?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
At cover twenty-ninth.
At the firehouse.
Okay, Matt, so you know you made it.
Just a time.
I'll go back. Basically, on the groundwater, I told them we were just in the, basically, planning stages, looking for a grant, but I don't think they had any, no, no information.
No, just that we need to submit for a preliminary planning grant from rural development, and we have, there's a notice of intent to file an application, Wendy, that I sent you a sample of. We need to put that in the paper, is where that goes. That'll be, that'll be part of the submission. I sent it a couple of weeks ago. I sent it to Paul today. I can send it to you again.
Yeah, please.
It was when we were trying to figure out the passwords I sent it to, but that's fine. I'll send it again. So that, that document needs to get posted in the paper, and that's your notice to the, to the, community that you're filing, filing a project with rural development. That's it. Thanks.
Police sergeant appointment. Basically, Matt Martin passed his sergeant's test, so now I would suggest we move forward and appoint him permanently in his time as probationary sergeant. That he's already done should count. Anybody have any questions on that? We're just making, that's all we have to do for civil service, right?
Same as what we did with the, yep.
Already time served would be his probationary time. So I'll make the motion for this second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anybody else have any other unfinished business? Okay, we'll move on to new business, craft church charges. September twenty-four, water, ten thousand dollars. Motion for that.
I make a motion that we, we cut that.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? September sewer surcharges, five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll also motion that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Budget amendment. Make a motion for that. Basically, that's, moving that twenty thousand dollar check into the recreation program to pay the recreation bills.
I'll make a motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Wastewater treatment plant, phase two amendment. Basically, that's with municipal solutions to extend their contract because New York State is supposed to close this thing out in July, and now they're telling us it's not going to be closed out until January, so we got to extend our contract by a little bit. This is basically, I just need a motion for me to authorize to extend another contract.
I'll make that motion. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Fire contracts. Need a motion for, need a sign of fire contracts.
I'll make a motion. We assign that contract. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Also, on here was supposed to be the housing authority contract. I don't see it on here, but that needs to be approved through the city.
I don't see that one either.
That'll be come out?
It's supposed to.
You have one?
I have it ready. I need permission for you to sign that.
Are we, that's the sweeping and sanding over there?
We went up two and a half percent on sanding, two and a half on sweeping. At the DPDW superintendent's suggestion. We did not go up last year, just so you know.
Okay, that's Wendy says we need a motion then to,
I'll make that motion.
Other views? Housing authority contract, the sweeping and sanding.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, disposition list. They should place permission to dispose of old time sheets, base dogs, bank statements, devices left. All stuff that goes back.
Based on statute of limitations.
Six, eight years ago.
Subtle.
He moved. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? See if you people came in, anybody in that came in have comments on the zoning, if they're here for that, or? Okay, people, correspondence. Reco updates for October? Want to say anything on that, Mickey?
Yeah, I'll just say that our next Raycoag board meeting will be January twenty-third, and I'll be at six o'clock, town of Willoughby. If you're not there, you might be appointed to position. That's how we got our chair last year. And then the Raycoag Economic Vision Summit, right now, we have tentatively set for April seventeenth, and that'll be at the Howard G. Second Center. And we're working on the program for that right now. Raycoag Transportation Survey was adopted at the Raycoag Board Meeting, and that report was sent out to both Jefferson and Lewis County Transportation Safety Committees. And then the local student activity program, that starts actually next week, October twenty-fourth. We have fifteen students sign up, all fifteen are from the fourth school districts within the Raycoag area. And then, we had also Raycoag approved at the last board meeting to form a student board if students want to use that as a project. So the students usually have to do a project to get their seal of civic readiness on their diploma, so part of that student activity program, Raycoag's willing to have like a student board forum. They would meet, discuss their ideas for the region, and then propose those to Raycoag at a later, a later point in time. Or it might even have them propose it at the Economic Vision Summit potentially.
Question for you. When you get this water, wastewater operator training up and running, is that going to be just for the MOSI students or can anybody?
That, right now, would be just for the MOSI students, I believe. That, that was his only thing, is he didn't want to open it up to the public because he didn't want the public, you know, intertwined with the students on the site, but most of the time, those training facilities are open to anyone, so he was trying to get approval for it to just be in the students. I don't know if that's what they'll end up with or not, but I'll let you, I'll let you know.
No, the reason I ask is we, we have a lot of our DPDW workers are already trained in both wastewater and the sewer, but we'd better, we'd like to have them all trained that way.
Yeah.
As it is, we have to send them quite a ways away. It'd be nice if we could just do it locally.
Yeah, well, I think eventually they might be looking at it as a continuing education thing, but this is just a pilot project to see how it goes, so I think they're looking at trying to focus it more just on the students this time around. And then we are going to have a website training for Raycoag communities that have their websites through Raycoag. They'll be in early November. The COG survey, we'll have the final COG survey results at University Albany did. Those will be coming out. As well as with that, related to that, University Albany sent in a letter of intent to the Department of Health to seek funding, basically to address EMS and volunteer firefighter issues, and as well as to try to get more improvement, what could be done, initiatives related to that. So the grant would be two hundred thousand dollars, and if it, if it does go through, and they want to use Raycoag as the project area to run those programs through, so we'll see how that turns out. Other than that, we already talked about the water wastewater operator training, so unless there's any other questions.
No questions? Double play, rookie trap. Did you get any information on that?
Where was that?
You're outside, right? Then we got a letter from Cream Cheese Festival, thanking the villages for everything they did, police department, everything. Then we just sit this other one in here for Reactive VR. Basically, they're looking for areas for solar farms, basically, if they ever want to. And our sewer plant. My thought there is, yes, we could be interested, but they're looking for community solar development. If we were to put solar down there, I would think it should be to operate our equipment that we have down there because our costs for running some of them blowers is pretty expensive. That's just for you to read over and get your ideas out. Let's have a think the municipal board would have to look at it also.
I think there's going to have to be a, I think we should respond to it, but I'm assuming that we're not going to do it, but I, we've got to do more of this looking over. Yeah, we got to look it over, but I think we've got to respond.
Well, Paul and I have talked in the past. We've got a nice space down there. We were ever do solar, and we brought our own electric down there in the plant. Anybody else have any correspondence or anything they'd like before we move on? Officer committee reports, village attorney, nothing to report.
Other than if we could, if you have a meeting, I'd request to go in executive session to get advice from, from you.
I also would like to request executive session, personnel issues. Okay, court treasurer, do you have any enforcement?
She left the report, like a soft, slanty, sort of.
Chief, please.
Not much. Cream cheese festival went very well, and we did get the bulletproof vest grant that we applied for. We did get that, so sixteen hundred dollars. It's almost two vests, so that's all I have.
Superintendent?
Nothing.
Capital future planning?
Nothing.
Nothing. Personnel? Finals? The ladies' fire department?
Um, I can read you the text that Joe sent me, but basically, there's nothing to report. Everything's going well.
You've had nothing from the police department? Planning board, zoning board, anything? Municipal board?
Just a very short meeting last week. Not much going on.
Town, the meeting's tomorrow, right? County, anything there?
No, I attended a meeting last month here, but nothing village related.
Recreation?
Yes, we are moving forward. We need to find out if two of our members are going to continue to be on or not based on conflict of interest. Moving forward, come next year, I think it's become painfully obvious that if other towns don't want to cooperate in terms of funding for their children, that we're going to have to limit the rec program for the village's children. I understand that the school, there are some kids that live outside the boundaries of the village that go to Lava Academy, but also we pay rent to use that school, so it's nothing that I want to do, but business is business. And I will use a town of Watson as an example. We pay taxes on our water filtration plant, so it's time that if these towns want to be part of the rec program, we need to have monies from them, so it's better set now than next March, so that, that it doesn't happen, that they say, didn't say anything. And I think that we should pursue or notify them that we're going to be looking for that, and we should provide them with the statistics that I don't believe we have yet, but we should have the next day or two as to people outside of the village that buy the different towns in this program, and there was quite a few. And I don't know if the county's participation is going to be anything or not next year, but that being said, we need to go forward. So, thank you.
I think that program served around three hundred students this year. Looks quite well attended. The only other thing I would have on recreation is Bob Mullin, J.D. Ross, the hockey association. Mike Yell, we met this week to discuss skating for this coming year. Mike's been notified, he's been awarded fifteen thousand for the skating program. Some of that will go towards the upgrades for the chiller because there's some extra cost for that new chiller that's going in right now, but they got to upgrade some of the electric. And then it's also got to be protected with a fence, so that's an extra cost, but we think possibly five thousand of that grant that Mike got could go towards that. The other thing they're hoping to do this year is start the skating season two weeks sooner. Right now, tentatively, it's scheduled to start December seventh, whenever it goes on. That's all I have. Reco, we've been through. Public comment? Carol?
Noticed a few times that I've come to the village board meeting, I had mentioned about the national grid pole on Jefferson Street, and I've been keeping track of that. They finally got it situated where it's not called, holding the spectrum and frontier lines by just a ratchet strap, which was decaying, which we're very lucky that nothing happened, and didn't hurt nobody or hurt somebody's property. The last time at the meeting, I had brought up about the rug and debris that's been on the curbside on Cascade Ave, and nothing's been done. And it's the white duplex house near the bridge. All that stuff is still there, and it's been there since July, August, September, and now October, and nothing's been done. And I thought something would have been done from the last meeting. Nothing's done, so it's four months. Also, there's down on, just noticed before when I came in, that there is also a big couch over on Stowe Street. And then also there's a night, and that I just noticed today, and then there has been a, a chair on Real Ave for the last three days. So I thought we're supposed to keep this community, you know, looking pretty good and not have debris like that. So I didn't know who is supposed to be, you know, responsible.
Well, the one thing I'm going to say there is Carol's been real good about having his guys go out and talk to these people, but the problem is every time he gets on one street and gets a couple of mattresses or two or three old couches cleaned up, the very next day, somebody else has got something on there.
But this has been going on for four months now, down where I live.
An ongoing thing for the police department.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying it hasn't been picked up. So, and then another thing is, is like what I talked about earlier, what is going on, the obstruction at the corner of Cascade Ave and Stowe Street? With the person that owns that property at the corner, of course, they got a violation, so I'd just like to know, how is codes, when people make complaints with codes about that area, how are they supposed to do their job when the village isn't doing their job? We've got laws, so what's that saying to the community? I mean, you're picking and choosing on what you're going to do. If you're not going to be equal to everybody, then why don't you just amend the law? Because it's a safety issue, and I just don't want nothing to happen at that corner. And something happens, like I brought it before, I don't want to see somebody seriously hurt or killed, and I would just like to ask also for, for the, for the attorney for the village, what would he think? I mean,
I'm not liberty to.
Okay, that's, but it's just the idea. As a taxpayer, I'm just kind of, you know, and other people, they have brought it up, and then people say when they do talk to any of you, it's like, nobody cares. So what's that saying to the community? Y'all were elected officials, and you don't seem to really think about the people, and it's pretty sad, and I hate to see anything happen because we have laws, and the village board is not abiding by them. Why do we have codes then? How are they supposed to do their job? I mean, come on, people. I mean, a lot of us take pride in this community, and we do worry, and I hate to see anybody, especially a school bus, with somebody, the school bus, they're trying to do their best trying to ease out. That's going to look terrible if something happens. That's going to be the school bus problem because they had to ease out in order to see, make a left-hand turn or whatnot, or anybody else. That's just the idea. It is a safety issue. I'm in law. And I'm just going to bring it up every single time. I don't see why you're letting this property owner get away with it. We're, it's like saying, we're going to pick and choose, and who's going to abide by the law? It's not fair. You've got laws, all of you, that you have brought up, and it's just the idea. Do we abide by them or not? If not, then we just might as well amend it, and then we don't take up time for the, for codes. Because how are they supposed to do their job? Thank you.
Anybody else?
I got a, a couple of things. I'm linking Lewis County, Paul, and somebody who had said you were starting to work on something to alleviate the flooding. And I don't want to ask for many detail, but just a quick overview of what you were looking at to start with.
Yeah, it's just in the beginning stages. We have a meeting with FEMA November eighth here, just with the village. Look over some, some of the areas that we've already repaired. Let's go out and look at some potential issues that we have out there. Ultimately, it's got to start up above us. You know, Tug Hill, up that area, we've got it as a combination of the village, town, and the county. Got to figure out what we can do up there to limit the amount of water that's coming down into the village. That's the first step. That's the first step. But we've, we've looked at some areas that are prone to flooding when you have tons of rain, so we're trying to figure out what we can do.
Oh, it's a, you're working with the state and the drainages up through the hospital area coming down?
That, that or not. That's, that's all the state and York.
But you, you're working with them though on what, what they're doing conversely with what everyone?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. The second thing is not mine. I was asked to bring it to the board because the person couldn't make the, the meeting. And the person is concerned about four-wheelers coming down. This is probably more UTVs. Four-wheelers coming down, from what I understand from him off Rural Ave and off the Barker Road down to Killings and up around, getting up into Harveys in that area. I can't say I've seen it on North State. Once in a while, I see a four-wheeler on Bossard Street at late at noon, but other than that, but that person wished me to bring it, bring it up, is that he was seeing them, I've seen him at Stewart's, but...
Also, they're coming down twenty-six. We talked to the same person you talked with, and my thoughts are this, that we need to have a sign on the limits of this village, on to every street that says no UTVs and ATVs, because people will say, well, it says ATVs and not UTVs. And that way, there's no question, and to the best of the police department's ability, we...
And I think Shell Street's already got some.
Well, it's got a sign with a picture for ATVs, but this person is recommending that the signs say no ATVs or UTVs.
Daryl and I are working on that, we've already discussed signings, so...
Do we have, do we have a, how, I guess, because I live more at Shell, but in the middle of the village, I don't see that. Is that becoming an issue, Daryl?
Yeah, it's almost every weekend.
All right.
I think that people are just getting lost, and then they're just going back to their, their Google map to get fuel or get something to eat, and then not realizing that the village isn't open, so...
I don't know if anybody watches TV, but apparently up in Village of Teresa, where the, the village roads are open, they have a problem. And we don't, I mean, there's, there's a place for that stuff, and it's not...
The ones that we have that have scattered into the village have been good. They've been respectful, they're not, you know, drive down Main Street speeding or pop wheelies, or they've been good with us, so. We've basically just dropped them back to the legal spot that they can hide.
I don't have a problem with that unless it's the same person or more than...
Yeah, it hasn't, man. It's, it's, it's out of towners that have no clue. Like I said, they're looking back on their phone, trying to find how to get back up there, so. Usually, if they're good with us, we extend it back to them.
But if we put the signs up, I guess the laws...
Yep, it'll definitely help. Yep.
Any other public comment? Any other comment on the zoning changes? If not, we need a motion to close that?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion if you want to.
No, the motion to close the public...
No, I'll close it, Joe, until, we're gonna keep it open to the next meeting.
Well, I'm glad we were keeping the zoning open. I know we were keeping the publiceering open.
Yeah, the publiceering.
I'll make that motion and we keep it open to the, to our next meeting in...
Public comment?
Second, the twentieth.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us down to the motion to go into executive session for personnel issues and we want a contract issue, right?
Paul, it's wanted to provide, give advice on a matter.
I'll make a, I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Dave, can we get your name for the...